You are all under every year putting together a budget, holding the bottom line, and being accountable to your constituents. We know that. We also know that your costs are constantly bringing you a challenge. So we can discuss the incentive further, but for tonight, I can't get into any greater detail.
I just didn't know the current was off the table.
But you also have to say when you close a street crossing like this, you're also changing the face of the neighborhood.
Right. Um, perfectly honest with the audience, when I heard this money, I was like, "Kaching." The railroad hasn't gone back to us. I thought it was a dead subject, fell off the face of the earth. Since then, I've been to a lot of the neighborhoods and, to be honest with you, I'm staunch against it. So I had, we checked with our local fuel money today from the state. If we close these crossings, we are accessible to get less local fuel money. On Linden Street, when, before the railroad cross, in those little alleys that go this way, the railroad must enhance those alleys for garbage truck, fire truck, whatever that go down them, all, no, all, all three of those alleys. So there's a lot in tandem with that.
Yeah, don't get, we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves.
Right, I realize that, but I'm just so everybody know.
Well, I will say, Councilman, I'm sorry that if you haven't heard from anybody, I will say that one of the folks on there is no longer with us. Liam just took his place. So there may have been some turnover there that may have been why there was a communication problem. But we're, we're coming back here. That's why we're here today.
You might want to mention that we're talking 2017, 18 projects.
Yes.
This year, we just talked this year.
Right, because originally, when, when my main concern was, they weren't sure how they were going to approach us, but I said, "I want letters sent to every property that would be affected on those streets." That they, sort of like what you did with Chestnut Street, you know, that everybody would have a come at that type of a public meeting. And the railroad guaranteed us that would happen, but it's kind of like stump down everyone, seeing you guys here now.
We can't send letters out.
I realize, I realize, I'm just, let that guy know where I'm sitting.
The public should know that the only discussion we've had is, there's 13 of them. I mean, the ideal thing would be to close all 13 of them for the railroad viewpoint. We knew from the beginning that couldn't be, so when it comes right down to it, these are the only three that can possibly be done. And that's why we want to work together, see if we can get these three done. You know, you can't close, you can't go to be closing Packer Street, you know, there's certain ones you just can't close. These three, you could physically close as far as the city, with situations we have to talk about. But up to this point, that's all it's been about. This, all we're doing now is, this is the first announcement, this is the first conversation we're having, and we'll see what that cleans down to. Linden Street's been a problem for all, even when we talked two years ago about it, it's a simple factor, how are we going to do that? But the rendering you guys put up there is a very interesting concept, and I'm curious myself how many homes are going to go down here tomorrow and check that out. But anyway, getting back to that, once we decide that these are the three places, then, I agree with what you're saying, Joe, then we'll contact people. But right now, it's just nothing more than.
Can I hear the three places again, please?
Sure, it's Linden Street, Church Street, and Woodlawn Avenue.
All right, because at one point I heard Spruce, so Spruce is not going to be included.
No, it's not on the proposal.
Spruce is just going to be island flashes or gates.
Anybody else got any questions?
Totally had her hand up.
Because you're coming back here after supposedly two years. Do you have a timeline in mind, or you're just putting this out here?
Well, as, as the Councilman said, as we were looking at 2017, 2018.
2017, 2018, but also Penn Dot is, is also watching the clock also, because they're, since they're contributing money, and that money is coming from the federal government, they would like to know some answers also.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Not on the closing of the, of the Spree, but my son-in-law lives at Long Railroad, my daughter. The railroad is actually hitting their garage.
Okay.
Because of the night maintenance given away.
Okay.
It is pushing against their garage. They fall, and they just keep getting a run around and out of it.
Okay.
That's up at clock seventeen, North Third Street.
Let's talk after, after this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina Russell, community activist.
Regina, I like you.
Thank you. Would you propose provisions? Are they going, so Leon is going to be handling the IT stuff. Now, is that going to be like where you handle the Googling? So when our fire department and ambulance, that all of these people are aware that these blocks are closed and they have to go around the neighborhoods?
The emergency response community will be aware. This is part of, um, emergency response in Pennsylvania usually runs through the county, the county level. And you have emergency response planners who take a look at all of these factors to begin to plan out, to game out situations in which they may have to adjust. And they will, from time to time, call us and say, "Can we get some information?" And we're happy to work with them on that. It's part of, you know, it's incumbent upon being a member of the Sunbury community that if your county 911 calls us, and we also have an emergency number that's public and it's available for, you know, emergency response to call us if there's an issue. Let's say there's a train stopped in the middle of Sunbury, and emergency response needs to get to the other side. And that's a number that they can call us in an emergency. So we are happy to work with them as they plan that out. This certainly wouldn't be the first crossing closed in our system, so we have experience with this.
With your upgrades, will cameras be posted in, at, at any sites going through the city?
Not on our.
Do you have any cameras now?
No.
And I, since you said we do deal with first responders, I believe that's going to include like the American Red Cross and finger if there's a chemical spill or something?
No. Probably not. Um, if there is such an incident, we work in very close partnership, not only with the local emergency responders, but also the state and federal agencies that are responsible for our collective security. We train, we provide training. We have, uh, every year we provide training for about five to six thousand firefighters and other first responders throughout our network on that very specific question. We have partnerships with all the necessary federal agencies, sharing information with them. Fortunately, it's never been safer to move goods, both hazmat and non-hazmat on the railroad. Today, ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine percent of all hazardous materials that move on the nation's railroads make it to their destination without an incident. You know, we're continuing to work to improve that number because we have to. I can fully understand your concern about that. We're concerned too, because please keep in mind, and sorry, I know this has opened up another topic. We are required by federal law to haul that hazardous material. We are not allowed to say no. We don't own the tank cars in which that hazardous material runs it.
They own it.
They are owned and leased by shippers, customers of the railroad. And so if a shipper gives us a tank car that meets that standard, the, the current federal safety standard, or folks southern, is legally obligated under federal law to haul that. This opens up a whole other topic we can discuss at another time, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. So partnerships with like FEMA, the Department of Homeland Security, the Pennsylvania Department of Emergency Management Agency, with whose director I've met no less than four times just within the last six months. Yeah, we want that too.
All right, thank you.
So these public meetings are going to have to have inclusive, a lot of, not only the public.
I'm sorry, what do you, what do you mean?
The, the, uh, future public meeting will not only include the public, but different agencies to answer such questions.
I'm not sure that, that we're having those kinds of public meetings here. We have, if we come and speak to another city council meeting, that would be another area. City council could invite us to a, a public hearing to discuss the road, the, the crossing closures, but we are.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Aside from being here.
If we are invited, that's something we would give, you know, strong consideration to.
I have a drill spanked.
What?
If you're being a fair go railroad, if there's an incident, the fire department cranes, we do certain things, but once the incident happens, it, it's yours because you're federal government.
No.
Do we, do we have a say in it, or?
No, if an incident takes place, the local first responders are in charge of the city.
Okay, well, good.
And we run information through the National Incident Command Center, which is out of Atlanta, which is also tied into the Environmental Protection Agency. We are also sending information to the Department of Environmental Protection, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, and a host of others. But in Pennsylvania, should an incident take place, your, your firefighters, your firefighting team are in charge. And that is why we go around the system providing training so that, uh, I assume you're with the first responders?
No.
No, okay. He tossed it over to you, so I thought maybe. And it is vitally important for the first responders to understand how to react to a railroad incident. If, for example, you need to shut off a locomotive, and why that may or may not be a good idea. So things like that.
But I guess, I just wanted to comment on your plan. Two of the crossings, I think you could probably get away with, I think you could probably get away with Woodlawn and Church because of the way the streets are situated. You'd get vehicles in there in a number of directions there. The problem you're going to run into is Linden. The problem Linden is, is that, and Councilman Henry touched on that, the two alleys that go from Spruce and into Linden, and from Linden into Wall, they're not big enough, you can't make a turn or anything like that. So anything that would happen on that side of the tracks, you would have to back the, or you could pull the upper exit, but they're going to have to back out, whether it's an ambulance please or fire. Now, you know, it is one way, I believe, from.
From Fort Down.
Fort Down. So you, you could, you can get in that way, Fort Down to.
Down to Third, yeah.
Coming, coming south, or west, whatever way you want to say it. So you can get in that way, and, you know, we could, we could get an ambulance straight up if we had to, and get out, or get out the other way. The problem with you closing off Linden is, is that you can't.
Okay.
There's, there's no turning mechanism in those alleyways without doing something, taking property away from somebody, or moving poles, because there's, there's hulking poles there too, utilities. The other tube you probably can get away with doing, because there's other ways of getting in there, and there's no homes directly affected, as it is on Linden at Church, because if you're on this side of tracks, on the, on the south or west side of the tracks, you can come straight down and keep going. If you're on the other side of tracks, there's really no homes there.
Yeah.
And the road is big enough, and there's other ways of getting around in there. You can go through, you can go through Moyers, or you can go through, and there's nothing too far to go. But, but, yeah, but, but you can't do that.
Well, this is good to hear because.
Linden is almost impossible to close down.
Well, I appreciate that, and this is good to hear because you all know Sunbury better than anybody. And it's one thing for us to come in and, and with this proposal, it's another thing to hear your feedback.
The thing about Woodlawn is, is that you have, you have, um, the pharmacy right there that has parking in the back, and you have a business right there, but they, their parking is in the back too. So everybody, everything can flow in and out of the parking lots and back down to Fourth Street. So you can get away with it there. You can't at Linden.
Great.
The problem, the problem with Linden Street is, a lot of times, we, we run an ambulance service, and a lot of problems is, the ambulances can't come down from either end. A lot of times they come up, they go up the wrong way.
They go straight up.
So that's, and then even the fire apparatus that we have goes up through that way the wrong way.
Yeah.
So I, I'm agreeing with him. I, when I was asked a question months ago about, you know, this, they were doing surveys, I recommended that those two, that you actually said Woodlawn and Church, and said those could be closed, I think, without affecting really a lot of anything. But Linden Street, I think, would have a major impact, just for that neighborhood there.
Great, thank you. Bill Bluesburg.
Yeah, there's no way of turning off the third on the Linden. Either direction seems to change.
Great, thank you.
I'm not with what they said about Woodlawn, because there is businesses back there, and there's places that you can't turn around back there to get in and out. Um, there's the Verizon store, the Verizon back there, and there's just businesses that the pharmacy back there, yeah, people come down, but you have a lot of older people that use that parking lot back there, and if they see that the road's closed and they can't come over, they're not going to come around. That's, that's just how it is. So I personally don't think Woodlawn should be shut down. Doesn't really affect me at all, I don't care, but I'm looking at that other end of the town. I see all the trucks that come in and out of there all day, especially for the Chinese restaurant, like the Lightning to Own place. There's plenty of trucks that come back and forth in there. Packer House gets deliveries all the time. And yeah, there's places to turn around, the city parking lot, which is going to take more wear and tear, they're going to have to be repairing it a lot more, because they're going to be turning around in those big lots. So I, I personally am against the Woodlawn, Woodlawn being closed.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Just because of that, and being a business owner back in that area.
Well, this is why we were here to hear this feedback, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, Court Street's twice as bad as far as delivery goes with tractor trailers in Woodlawn.
Well, with that, thank you very much. Uh, we do really appreciate it, and we're proud to be a part of the Sunbury community, we really are. Uh, as you know, we just completed the purchase of the D and H, so now our folks southern is hauled here in this area, and we're very excited about where things are going to go. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you. We'll be, we'll be talking in the near future. Thank you.
Jamie, Jamie G.
I'm here. One more time.
This is Norley on there. No, you're all right, you're all right, go ahead.
All right. So we have one more payment to make for your Chestnut Street payment, five seven thousand five fifty-two seventy cents, I'm going to process, I'm going to get back to the office tomorrow, which leaves one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents in that activity that we want to move to phase two, which is the utility reconstruction from Third Street to 10th Street. So I would ask for your approval this evening for that modification, to move that one thirty five ninety-eight and forty-two cents to phase two, as well as there is one thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-two cents of program income that was generated from the sale of South Street property, which was a demolition done with CDC funds, with some additional funds added from the payment of the housing and loan fund. So again, this evening, if you would approve that, one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents provision from phase one to phase two, as well as the allocation of one thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-two cents of program income to phase two. I'm sorry, phase one, that's going to be phase one, we're going to spend that program income now.
The whole thing, or just the thirteen ninety-four?
The one thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-two cents. I'm going to spend that on this last invoice.
So the thirteen ninety-four sixty-two goes to phase one, one hundred and thirty thousand five ninety-eight forty-two goes to phase two. Councilman Easter made that a motion, you a second?
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rightner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Prising?
Thank you. And Glenda from our office will be taking my place long after I leave for a little while, so.
We'll not.
She's been there for quite a long time, so she knows what she's doing, so she has good hands to help her figure out what they're doing.
We told you Dale's only 12 miles away, so we know where to find it. Uh, I think we have anything we developed this morning tonight?
Thank you.
Uh, new business. I just want to make a, a statement on our police contract. As you know, you know, we're behind on that, we're negotiating, vest is replaced, John, so we have vests, we're animating that. We met last Thursday morning, last Thursday with the officer, with the, with the negotiating committee, and tried to get this update as much as we could. And I just want to let the public know that, you know, I've been doing this for 23 years, this is either my fifth or sixth police contract we've negotiated. Never ever have we gone to a, an arbitrator that we've even thought about. We're always, when Michael was with us, we always had a way to work that out. I don't know, I guess frustration is my biggest word. It's just unbelievable. I, I never negotiate anything that got near the end, and we went backwards, and we clearly went backwards at that meeting. So there's no question in my mind, and I, and you know, if you people know me, I'm, I'm a positive person, there's nothing negative about me, but realistically, we're, we're going to be somewhere in arbitration in June. It's our goal, and the, the committee's goal here in the next about four months, whatever it may be, till we get that arbitration, to do what we can, to settle as much as this we can. But we went from about three issues to 15, and again, when I talk about moving backwards, that's, that's what we're doing. The other thing is, there's never, you know, there's, there's no money in 24 years, that defendant, a police department, tried to get more officers on, you know, now win sometimes and I lose sometimes, but there's, there's nobody that pushes for that, and the cost of this, and I can't get into details because we are negotiating, so, you know, I'm not giving you any details, but the cost of the contract and the enormous amount of money that they want over the contract for five years would not only prohibit me from hiring anybody, I don't see how we can even maintain the offices that we have. And as the mayor, that's my goal, is to be able to maintain officers. I've, I've always been a big personal believer that you need 12 guys. It, it just works out perfect for shift work, and with as many days off as they have, it's always been successful. And that's been my goal, and it has been successful the last couple of years. But, you know, we, we, the people have nothing to worry about, they're being supported, I mean, it's not like anybody's lives are endangering your property values, and we're doing the best we can, but, uh, the process is not moving the way it should be moving, and I just want, I think the public should know that. And, and like I say, hopefully we'll come up with something, but I anticipate we won't come up with something at final until after that, I mean, June. Again, we're going to do our best to negotiate, try to whittle those 15 items down to two or three, so at least it makes it more sensible, we want to get in front of arbitrator. So I just want to make that public. Jim, solar dumpster. Pump site.
The old landfill over here at Cursers Hill, we have a company wanting to do a study, no cost to us, feasibility study, it would be feasible to take solar panels there, produce energy, electricity. That's the only that we're doing. Yeah, no cost.
Well, the only question I have on that, I talked to the gentleman last week. He said, "Don't think there is a fee of two to three thousand dollars."
Yep.
But they agreed to waive it. The only question, the concern I have is, is they agreed to do that, I would like to see it in the contract before we sign it, if they will not charge us. It's not in the contract.
There's no fees in the contract, though.
It doesn't matter, but he said, "It normally is typically two to three thousand dollar fee."
Well, I had to solicit re-order, and he said it was all right, but we can't put that in, and there's no fee, so.
I just want to clarify one thing, it's my understanding that we agree in this tonight, we have 120 days, so that means if I want to go visit one of these and talk to somebody, I would have more than enough time to come back, and nothing can happen, no matter what comes up, correct? Up to 120 days when we make a final decision, if we say we want to walk away from, we just walk away from it. Is that right?
What is, what is this?
This is a company that's going to come in, the, if people don't have lived in the city your whole life, if you go down to the very end of the city across the dike system, that used to be a, a landfill, and that hasn't been used, wow, 60s, 70s, I guess, I don't know.
Close in the 70s.
70s, I guess it was. Anyway, it's just a vacant property, there's a bridge here that we don't own, it's privately owned, I'm not even sure how these people would even get to it, but that's, that's another issue. But anyway, all we're doing tonight is talking about what Jim has proposed here, is this company could come in and take a look at that site, to put up these giant.
Who's the company?
Tan Gent. T A N G E N T. They, the pip, the, the information we have, there's a lot of them in the Allentown Eastern area, there's, well, there's other states, and there's a, a diagram, it's just something they would put on the land, but I'm not clear as of what it helps, I guess it helps pay electricity, what an amount, so that's, that's what, that would be our advantage, at no cost to us. So all they're doing is coming in even, they, I, they personally might come in and take a look at this and say, "It doesn't work because there's a mountain on this, what, the south side, and that's going to block a lot of sun," so I don't know if it's worth it or not, but that's, that's all we're talking about, is if these people are going to come in and take a look at that ground and do some kind of study, and no charge to us, and then come back to us and say, "Yes, we can do this, and here's what the benefit is to you." Is that correct?
Yes.
So have they put forth what the benefit would be, like would it?
It just talks about.
Assist in the city lighting, or the, the city municipal as far as the lighting, or?
They could, they could produce enough energy to take care of the city, it's not the city itself, not the, not the homes.
Correct, correct, that's what I, that's what I mean.
But they had to do a study because of the rays of the sun and the, you know, 365 days. That's what they're, that's the only that they're doing right now. It may not even work out.
Sure.
And, and let me just read this one sentence. "At the end of this exclusive period, Tan Gent and Sumberry may mutually, may, if it works, mutually agree to negotiate and execute a power purchase agreement." So whatever that's going to, whatever that's going to create power-wise, we would have the opportunity to use that, I guess, to lower our bills or something like that.
So are they associated with like PPL or Talon or any of those companies?
This is a separate company that puts up solar panels, and it's a big corporation that goes out and invests in solar panels, okay? They make money off of it, they don't do it for free.
Well, obviously. So have you discussed this maybe even with the company on South Second Street that does panels?
They didn't make the offer. These guys could have made us an offer.
But they're only doing the study to see if it's feasible to do it.
Right.
Well, that's, you're way out ahead of the project now.
I just want to know if you're thinking way ahead of the project.
Well, they don't have the resources for a couple million dollars to do the project. We don't put the money up, if we would go that far, but we're even talking about that because they might come back and say, "The site's not, it won't work exactly," Jerry.
When I talked to the gentleman, and it's on page three, Dave, it, they're saying it's going to be point zero eight-five, whatever that means, per kilowatt. It'll up 1.95% every year, so we have to lock into a 25-year agreement with it. Yeah, but see, I don't know if that means we make a dollar or we make a million dollars. The only thing. Jerry, you were with me when I was talking to him, and I don't, but he said it'll help reduce our rate, so.
Regina Russell, please. Will the city be eligible for any federal grants because that would be considered falling under the Green Act?
I don't know where many federal grants that are left.
Yeah, there is, there is possibility, Regina, but the problem is, we didn't get far enough down the road to even think about getting a grant.
Yeah, right, but they would say.
Site may not be, that's the first thing we want to do, find out if the site's acceptable.
I had a question, then. Jim, would that, would the company be using the site for free then, or is the city planning on leasing the property to them, or?
Eventually, the, the whole complex would be owned by the city if we go that far. We're not even.
No, I know, I'm just wondering if you had thought of, you know, had any of those thoughts yet, if that's something that they brought up. Do they want to purchase the property from the city?
No.
They just want to use it, but?
They want to put the, they funded the, the project, okay? They make a percentage off of it through the next 25 years to get their money back out and make their profit. We end up owning it if we get that far.
Okay.
Okay, in, in a 25-year stretch. Now, and there's no penalty for early payoff, almost like leasing a car, we'd be doing the same principle, but we're talking about generating electricity.
So we're, we're basically buying solar panels then, and, and then we own them at the end of the 25 years.
Right, exactly.
All right.
So the question is, do we make any money by doing that?
Right.
We make more save, that's the, but we don't know if it's going to work yet.
There's a reason that solar panels don't work, and that's because, from every viewpoint, if you look across the country, is because it takes 25 years of investment before you even turn anything around, I don't care if it's your house or business or whatever it is, so. All right.
So anyhow, I'll make motion that they can do the study, that's it.
I'll second.
And what review, right? Do you review?
Do you review it?
Well, I'm Mike.
Okay.
Right here?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Easter?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Kramer?
No.
Who to pay in voice of Beth?
Yes, we have a hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents in general fund expenses, and we have four thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents in, if you don't add that account, I'd like to make a motion that we pay all the other shares.
Henry?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Prising?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Uh, any audience comment? Yes, sir?
There should be a letter from the Police Union Pact, they dropped it off at Terry Thursday. They voted to go to a third step grievance on an issue, and so I'll preview that.
Yep.
By contract.
Everybody should have a copy of that in their pack.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm going to hazard, all right. All right, we'll need a note. Yes? Yes. You know.
All right, Regina Russell, every year I, I stand before the council, and I always have a concern about the mosquitoes and the summertime standing water, properties with tires so forth on them that would collect water. I have a concern now, and I'd like to know if the city is going to discuss a plan with this new ZK virus coming into the states. Will code, I guess, enforce, I, I guess all I can do is ask, will they begin to enforce, enforce the fines on properties that still have junk in their yards? I hate to say this, Mr. Easter, I was waiting to see how long it would take your tenant to start mapping up again, but he's got a dumpster in front of the garage door at four oh six Walnut. It has a lot of rusty materials in there, from rusted metals in there, from some sort of broken up lawn tractor, and the lawn tractor is in there. And this type of disposal, when it rains, will hold standing water. I, I look on my block this week, I did a video, and it shows, we have a couple of rentals on the, on, on South Fourth Street that till today, they don't have any handrails. Two years ago, an elderly woman fell from those steps twice, the second time she didn't recover after going to a living assistant place. And I, I still, the sidewalks, I, I have an issue with this. And I, I just would like to know, when is the code office going to help the residents in these areas to straighten out these issues?
I miss that.
So I'm dealing with mosquitoes, I'm dealing with standing water, I'm dealing with people having junk in their yards that collect water that's going to be standing water. And if the people are afraid to contact you that live next door to someone that's doing these things, because they're afraid that the minute they contact the code office, now the code office is going to be coming and harassing them instead of harassing the person who's violating the city code.
Yeah, I don't want that to ever happen, but if we get a complaint, we address it. And, and, and whether, whether it's mosquito, I mean, Mike, how many times did we go out and, and get rid of water barrels and stuff last year?
We were silent.
But soon, I mean, if we find out about it, we address it, and whether it be junk or what, we address it.
Well, I see him, and not to interrupt, but when I see him, I just write down the address and give it to the code office, and they usually take care of it in a day or two when they get time, that's.
Well, I know, I try to do the same thing, so, and a lot of times it takes two and three years before it gets taken care of. Mike, I don't know if you, you can do that, but.
Go ahead.